I guess so, he's on vacation?
Uh, he's, yeah, he's doing something, I don't know what.
Vacation?
Probably, uh, he's probably out racing someplace.
Drinking?
Drinking, racing.
Semi-retirement. Well, he, he's did a good job on the elec- on the retirement, that's all.
You guys ready?
Yeah, so...
I'd like to bring the May 11th, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission. Would everybody please, uh, join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abbott?
Present.
Commissioner Selberg?
Here.
Commissioner Buck? Commissioner Azami?
Here.
Commissioner Walker?
Here.
Commissioner Gabrielson?
Present.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Gordon?
Here.
Chairman Flouche?
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
A couple of announcements, anyone who has not yet signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, uh, which is also located in the lobby, uh, next to the signup sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on, including sub-items. Please note that there are stairs on the right, left, center aisle, and we ask that you use caution when using these stairs. There's also a ramp located at the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, please have seventeen copies and give them to the staff member in the back of the auditorium. Got her hand up, thank you. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the table with the overhead camera next to the podium to present your document. If you want your document to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the document. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are sitting at the table with microphones during the meeting. If you have a question, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium who can meet you in the lobby to discuss. All speakers are limited to two minutes to make their presentations and statements. Everyone, please turn off your cellphones, pagers, or place them on vibrate. If you must receive a phone call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask that the audience refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, the items with the recommendations made by the Commission, which will be held by the Board of Supervisors Monday, June 6, 2016, at 9:30 a.m. in the same location, with the exception of any continued items. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed curb-to-curb. Also, only bottled water is allowed in the auditorium. No food, soda, coffee, et cetera, is allowed in the auditorium. If there is any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break at 1 o'clock for lunch from 1 to 2. Thank you. Election of, oh, minutes from last month. Everybody had a chance to look through the minutes? Do we have any questions, corrections? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott, and seconded by Commissioner Gabrielson. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, next item is election of...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Selberg made that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Barbara, can you change that?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I don't want to get myself in trouble.
Well, you know, I like everybody in trouble.
You guys look very the same.
Yeah, it just came like the same sound. Election of Chairman and Vice Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you're doing a great job, uh, once a month that we get together, so if there is no objection by the other commissioners, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Carl Flouche as the chairman.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner...
Discussion if they want to...
Well, yeah, any discussion? Uh, we have a motion by Com- you got some?
Um, yeah, I mean, if no one else opposes, I mean, I kind of wouldn't mind trying out your position, nothing offensive to you. I think you did a great job, I just think that sometimes in life we need to change up things as well. So, I don't, you know, I don't know if that's a discussion or if that can...
Okay, no, it's...
No offense to you, ladies and...
No, 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 I don't worry about it, trust me. Uh, anyway, we have a motion by Commissioner Mehdi, or Mehdi Azami, and seconded by Mr. Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, those opposed, same sign. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, that was Commissioner Kelly and Gabrielson. Uh, election of Vice Chairman.
I'll make a motion if it's proper.
Sure, go right ahead.
Nominate Mehdi Azami as, as Vice Chair.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Selberg and Commissioner App, seconded by Commissioner Abbott. Any discussion? Uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Have a speech?
No. Nah, nada. All right, item number one.
Good morning, item number one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of a Cessar's parcel number 402-77-009H from an AR/5A agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size zone and an AR/8A agricultural residential eight-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential one-acre minimum lot size zone in the Arizona Strip vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona, and staff does recommend approval with standard conditions.
All right, is the applicant present? The applicant is not present, we have no speakers on the item. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I have a question for the staff. This subdivision, is that going to be required, any improvements like sidewalks, curb gutter, anything like that, that they're now going to be one acre?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, neither the state statute nor the Mojave County Land Division regulations consider this kind of split a subdivision. It falls under my, uh, lot split or minor land division, in which case the state statute limits us on the kind of improvements we can require. This property actually, uh, has frontage on Chaparral as well as Scenic Boulevard. Scenic Boulevard's paved Chaparral is constructed in a native material manner. I believe, you know, electricity is in the area, in this area, water and sewer are on site.
Yep, thank you.
Any additional discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve according to staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gabrielson, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
That was by Gordon.
Oh, that's Mike Gordon, I'm sorry, my hearing's bad. Anyway, Commissioner Gabrielson made the motion and Mr. Gordon seconded. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
All in favor, you mean? All in favor?
Oh, all in favor, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Keith, could you raise the voltage?
Okay, uh, motion approved. Item number two, A.
Yes, item number two, A. Good morning, Chair Flouche, members of the Commission. Item number two, A, is a request for an extension of time for Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2010-230, as amended by Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2012-21, as well as 2014-164, which is setting forth the major amendment to the Mojave County General Plan. And at the November 10th Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the Commission did, uh, conduct an evaluation of this extension, and they granted to table the motion for six months to allow applicants to come back with more additional information. At the March 9th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the Commission did request us to have the item put back on the May agenda, and, and so the staff has scheduled this hearing again. We've yet to receive any information from the applicants, so we're pretty much here for the Commission to discuss with applicants for the updates.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You're saying we have not received any documents since the three, four, or five months ago?
Nope, Commissioner Azami, no, we have not.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, uh, it seems like, you know, we've been talking about this forever. My suggestion is that, you know, uh, we are just the advisory committee. I would suggest to just, you know, send it to the, whatever decision is going to be, approval or denial, let's send it to the Board of Supervisors for their decision because they're the elected officials, they're the one that, uh, they need to make the decision. We are just advisory committee. So, I am against it because of the reasons that we already talked about, but let's put it for discussion. Regardless of whatever it is, I don't think we should table it anymore, we should send it to the higher authority for them to make that decision. That's my recommendation.
All right, well, let's get back on the, on the deal here. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Applicant's present, is, uh, we have no speakers on the item, would you like to address the Commission?
Just by way of reintroduction, I'm Robert Hibbs, I'm a principal with Sterling Solar, and we appreciate your desire to get documentation relative to our progress. If you recall, the, the process to, to create a solar facility requires that we get a power purchase agreement, that we find funding from financiers, uh, get an interconnection agreement, and then get our NEPA approval, which is the discussion here. The, um, our issue here, our primary issue here is that we, when we talk to most of these people, we're under a non-disclosure agreement, and I brought, I can't show you the agreement, but I'll read you the, some of the definitions of what's confidential under those agreements, and that is the fact that discussions between the disclosing party and the recipient may occur, are occurring, or have occurred with respect to the proposed transaction, the fact that the disclosing party has made or may make inquiries of the recipient regarding the proposed transaction, or any other information whatsoever pertaining to the proposed transaction. Now, we're legally bound by these non-disclosure agreements. We, I, I can represent to you that we spent a majority of the month of January in China talking to solar developers and panel manufacturers, I can't say who they were, but it's not as though this is going without effort. So, um, anyway, that, uh, we'd appreciate you, uh, possibly sending it up is the best route, Mr. Azami, I think that, that would at least clarify the issue and we can move ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I have a question for the county attorney. As you can see, it's been asked, Commission, to blindly accept their statement without any documentation for us to review it. Is the statement true that, you know, they can dis- not disclose to the Commission, and I assume to the Board, about, uh, you know, what they're planning to do, all the details, without approval, is it proper?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Azami, it's not uncommon to have non-disclosure agreements when you're negotiating contracts, it happens with the county from time to time, it's, however, entirely within the prerogative of the Commission to decide whether or not you want to send it up to the Board, or deny it, or approve it, it's, you have the discretion to do that. As far as them not submitting any physical documents in this period of time, you can take that as it is and decide that that is so offensive to the Commission that you intend to deny the extension, or you can take him at his word and, and accept that and send it on to the Board. So, the discretion lies in the hands of the Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify something. I've been looking at this for a number of years, and it seems as though we, the Commissioners, are getting this and asking to deny it or approve it without any information.
Exactly.
Am I right or wrong? I like to, that's a question for staff, am I close to being right? We're getting this to approve or deny without being able to get any information from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, um, the amount of information submitted by the applicant in his original request is, is the only information staff has to put before you. Whether or not the Commission considers that sufficient information to make a decision on, or is the amount and type of information that you were anticipating is, is kind of the Commission's decision? Can I... Staff actually did not make a, a recommendation on this account, what we said is if the Commission decides to do either an approval or denial, here are the parameters for you. We did that because we know that the, the information the Commission has requested in past meetings has not been submitted to either the Commission nor the staff.
So, what we request la- when we referred it to this meeting, none of that has come to staff that you could present to us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, the staff and the department have received no additional information other than what is, what we placed in your packets today.
Thank you.
Ms. Gabrielson?
Uh, Ms. Gabrielson?
Um, okay, as far as I'm understanding, is way back when it was going to be a sub, then it's going to be a solar. We're here to base land use. Land use for this project meets its criteria. There's no public feedback of bad, and since, you know, the documents, I guess, that we've been waiting on over and over again are financial, where his financial backing is, am I understanding this correct?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I disagree with that comment because there is a statute of limitation on the time. If that is not the case, there should be, anytime that, you know, we go through like a zoning, there should be no limitation, there is onward improvement or commitment that is done by the applicant needs to be respected. So, if I have a part of, a parcel, I can label it as, uh, you know, let's say, whatever, MX, or, you know, any zoning, and just leave it there without any improvement for the life of the property. This is not the intention of the land use ordinance. The land use ordinance has a expiration, and that's why they're before us, because to show the forward improvement. The other property owners around that project also have the right, so if I know that this is going to be labeled as solar, uh, and I come in to do whatever I want to do, that is going to influence my decision on that parcel. So, you're right in part that that is basically, application is correct, but there should be, if you look at the land use ordinance, there should be a forward progress, and that was the commitment from many, many years ago until now, that we will forward progress, we are going to do it, and even the last time, they said that they're going to do it. The other thing that, you know, I, I don't understand is that the applicant shared some of the documents with you and with Commissioner Jones at the time?
Right.
So, it seems like, you know, they're selecting two Commissioners from the Commission, and they can disclose to two of the Commissioners to translate to the rest of the Commission. That, I've never seen it, in many, many years that I've been in this Commission, I've never seen any application like this, this is not the first solar application before us, we had a lot of more, they had presentation, they showed all the details, who, I mean, Cobra was here, they were showing us all the information about everything that was a part of it. But again, as I said earlier, we have done this, you know, long enough, we are just advisory committee, so, or Board, so we better just, uh, pass it on to the Board of Supervisor who are supervisors, who are the elected officials for their decision.
I would, I agree with Azami on that, very much so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional discussion from Commissioners?
If I may make a motion?
Sure.
Uh, I'll make a motion to deny with the decision to go to the Board of Supervisors for the final decision.
Second motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Azami, a second by Commissioner Abbott. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye with statement, I don't think a motion should, if we're going to pass it to BOs, I feel that putting a deny motion in there instead of just leaving it as is to give it to them to decide.
Well, that'll go forward.
Well, I understand that, but...
It can be drawn.
They'll still do what they want to do.
Right, I'm just stating my proposal.
I'd like to make a statement. I said aye because I really feel kind of trapped in this, that I don't know how to handle it with the information we've been getting, so I feel we should move forward with it, and maybe, maybe the Supervisors can do a better job or...
Absolutely.
Fix the thing, whatever needs to be done.
Yep. I agree.
Any, uh, any additional discussion? Okay, uh, item number two B.
Yes, Chair Flouche, members of the Commission, item number two B is the extension of time for the Sterling area plan. Now, this is the exact same as the general plan, but this is the area plan, so it'd be the same discussion with regards to the area plan to the general plan.
Same motion?
Applicant is present, any discussion, any conversation, any questions of the applicant? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny, uh, and sending it to the Board of Supervisors for their fa- final decision.
Second motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Azami, a second by Commissioner Abbott. Those in favor of denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Same sign. Okay. Two C.
Item number two C is evaluation of a request for an extension of time for BOs Resolution Number 2010-233, as amended by BOs Resolution Numbers 2012-023 and 2014-166, setting forth a rezone to MX heavy manufacture, manufacturing and ESP solar photovoltaic overlay zone for a solar power plant and related uses in the Sterling vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona.
Thank you. Uh, the applicant is present, uh, any discussion from the Commission? I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a statement as applicant, this is the final of the three, is that correct?
Okay, go right ahead.
And, and I hate to do this again, but we need to discuss the fact that there's a substantial conflict of interest?
There is not, and I, we're not going to go through this again.
And I want to read from the LinkedIn...
Mr. Hibbs.
...website for Mr. Carl Flouche, and it says, "Mr. Flouche is in the development stage of a new 600-megawatt combined-cycle, uh, power facility."
It doesn't say solar, does it?
And then it goes on, it doesn't matter, because this involves...
That was three years ago. Mr. Hibbs, you're way out of line on this. You were on line the last meeting, the meeting before that?
I have the right to speak, sir.
If I let you.
And the fact is, he's still contesting monies that we have set aside at WAPA.
I don't care.
So, in order to get, I know you don't.
And I'm not doing anything with WAPA, so get your story straight.
I know that you have an objection to certain funds that are still sitting with...
Mr. Chairman, could I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Abbott.
I have to renew my objection, I don't need to go any further, I know it's irritating to him and to you, but the fact is, we have an issue here.
Yeah, well, I have...
The reason of this language...
Good luck with that.
I have no issue regarding what you and Mr. Flouche may have, but I don't believe it's the Commissioners' responsibility is to hear and get involved with legal thing.
I don't disagree, sir.
And I'd like to ask our attorney if we should be involved in making statements or be influenced by what you're saying that's going on between, so I'd like to ask our attorney to clarify that.
I don't, I don't object to that, what I want to do is present into the record, uh, a portion of Mr. Carl Flouche's LinkedIn page, you can all go look at it, and see what he's doing in the power community, and, and we clearly have solar, and we have combined-cycle capabilities that are being impacted by this. So, I'm sorry to bring it up again, but we needed to put it up.
I have no PP, I have no power purchase agreement.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I guess, uh, Mr. Abbott has a question.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Abbott, uh, no, I don't think this discussion is germane to the issue at hand. If he wants to submit something for the record, it's prerogative, regardless of what you believe, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
The Commission already made a decision to send it to the Board of Supervisor.
Okay, and, and please proceed with your...
The Commission already made a decision to send it to the Board of Supervisor?
With a denial.
Yeah, absolutely, but I mean, that's up to...
Instead of just sending it up, I understand.
That's up to the, the Board of Supervisors to look at it, and there's not going to be a Carl Flouche there or anybody else that you can accuse of, so what I'm saying is that...
There was a Carl Flouche involved with the denial here.
Okay, I'm speaking, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, what I'm saying is that, you know, that Commission, the Commission is already sending it to the Board of Supervisors, they're elected officials, and I'm sure that, you know, uh, you know, they would be able to look at it, listen to you, and hopefully they make the right decision, okay? Thank you.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Yes, and I submit this to the clerk?
Go. Gallup in the back?
Okay.
Or you can do it up front here. Item number three. Oh, we need to make a motion, yeah, I thought I did. I'll entertain a motion.
I made a motion, uh, I'll make a motion to deny with sending it to the Board of Supervisors for the final decision.
Second motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Azami, a second by Commissioner Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign.
Aye with comment, I just, uh, I agree that it should be passed to Board of Supervisors, but without a deny or approval, attached to it.
Well, we can't pass it on if we don't have something on it.
No, but that's, that's not the motion, though.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Ms. Gabrielson, the Commission has to recommend one thing or the other, you just can't send it on without a recommendation, that's your statutory responsibility.
Okay, motion carries. Item number three.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Cessar's parcel numbers 317, 36, 035, 036, and 037, from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to a CRE 20A, um, commercial recreation 20-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a motocross facility in the White Hills vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. One response was received from adjacent property, from an adjacent property owner in opposition. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions. Thank you.
Is the applicant present? Okay, we have no speakers on the item, would you like to address the Commission?
I'm, I'm not really sure what to say, other than, than, uh...
State your name and address, and that's all you need to do.
My name is Jason Falk, 16...
My name is Jason Falk, 1600 Turf Drive, Henderson, Nevada, 89002.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, some of the questions that was raised was the noise factor and neighboring properties. Uh, I believe that, you know, so what, how would you, you know, overcome that objection in terms of?
Um, a lot of, well, the majority of the land around is vacant. Actually, almost up to quarter mile or over a quarter mile, it's, it's vacant all the way around. There's also the...
At this time, they're vacant. But there are some properties, I, I know that one of them, that we got was two properties immediately, I believe, south of this property.
Correct. That's, that's Robert Cos. He actually called me and was, was asking me to buy his property off of him for a premium amount, more, more than what the land was worth.
Okay, but that's not my question.
Got it.
My question is about the noise factor and, you know, things that neighboring properties. You said there is no, nobody there now, but obviously there can be an end user in the future.
Correct. Um, the idea would be to put a, a six-foot berm around the, the entire property, as it was required also that possibly a fence would be needed to block the view, so a six-foot berm, and then as well as dig down the, the facility a little bit, as we're, we're going to use the dirt anyway to pile up the jumps and all of that. So, it would, that would help with, with noise.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Do we have that commitment anywhere? Because I didn't see that with the staff, uh, as a condition. Has it been presented by the applicant to you that they're going to have to get down and the noise factor would be minimized, anything?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, excuse me. Within the conditions, condition number two is that they have to comply with our site plan requirements and with our fencing requirements. They do have to have a six-foot...
No, that's your recommendation, I understand. But I'm saying that have they provided you with any design to minimize?
No, they have not. That would be in the site plan stage of the, of the process.
Thank you.
Any additional questions of the speaker?
I have a question. Who actually owns this property that you're, that the applicant is making the request for, for this?
Um, it's, I, I actually am in, in a contract to purchase the property. The, the owners are the Droudens, and they own all those parcels, as well as another parcel right in front of it.
So, they own it? You're just...
They currently, they currently own it, and upon approval of the rezone, then I would purchase the property.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass according to staff recommendations with the fact it has a durable, not, you know, I, fence requirements are usually chain link or, you know, slotted. I'd like to see a noise reduction fence stipulation in there.
Okay. I have a second.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think something should be added about what sort of DB, uh, reduction would be required, because, uh, you know, any, any fence would give some...
Right.
Something, and I'm not...
Oh, if it was a chain link fence, it wouldn't do anything.
I'm not an expert on that, so...
I'm not either.
I, I would, I would, I don't know what to say about it, but...
Yeah. Uh, I don't know what the decibel would be, would be.
Well, they can...
You want to add something? Well, I don't know what would be a decibel that would work.
I guess can we back up for a moment and table my motion and ask a question?
Sure.
Are your dirt bikes going to have baffle lines? Are they going to be baffled?
Yeah. All, all exhausts are required to run a, a specific DB, and they, they cannot pass 100 DB, which, which, which is loud, but that is, that is 100 DB within eight inches of the rear of the exhaust. That's where, that's where they put the meter.
Right.
So, beyond that, um, that's basically it.
Okay. But you are going to make sure they're all regulated to the proper DBs, right?
Correct.
Okay.
What about dust?
That's, I, I, in the proposal, I was going to put a well in, and so I could keep it watered. It's also, um, optimal for the, for the riding conditions to be as moist as possible.
Let's get back to our motion.
Um, I'll entertain the same motion I've done previously. I recommend, as staff, bleh, I, I can talk. I recommend approval according to staff recommendations with the fact that you need to have and construct a proper fence line for noise barrier.
I'll second. We have a motion by Commissioner Gabrielson, a second by Commissioner Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I apologize to the commission, although I have an appointment. I have to go, Dr. Abbott.
Okay. Put down 50 bucks for next month when he comes in. Where he buys lunch. Item number four.
Hey, Mary.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit on assessor parcel number 30825009 to allow for a manufactured home park in an AR 36 agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone in the Mineral Park vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Three responses were received from adjacent property owners. All three were opposed. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions, except for condition number eight. Uh, the applicant has requested that we allow two years instead of the normal one year for commencement of the project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Chris Gary, half owner of the parcel we're talking about. So, uh, I'm, I've, this is my second time to come here. I was here about five years ago, and you, you gave us a kind of conditional go-ahead as long as we gathered some information and lowered the density. And, uh, well, we've, we've got the information you need about depth of water, if, if you're still looking for it, and we've cut the density by half, from 300 rental units to 150. And, uh, other than that, we, we promised to be good neighbors to our neighbors, and I hope our neighbors will be good neighbors to us. But the, the land is suitable for what we want to do, and out of 25 or so letters we sent out, there were three people who opposed, and perhaps the others are for it or don't care one way or another, but, uh, you're entitled to listen to their side of the story as well. But the third side of the story is probably the people that would not be heard if, if you deny us, and those would be the people who would like to move into this manufactured home park, but, uh, and, and would like to have a nice, quiet place to live, and we're happy to, to provide that. So, other than that, if you have any questions for me, go right ahead.
Any questions of the speaker?
I have a couple of questions. Do you intend to do anything as far as paving the road from the, where it's blacktop now over to that, or put any kind of gravel that would keep the dust down?
At this time, no, and, uh, I've, the, the people in charge of the, the road maintenance for, for the county said that it's not necessary. If the time ever comes when it's really, uh, necessary, then I think we ought to go ahead and do that.
Okay. Uh, what, what's your water system? Where's that coming from?
We don't know where the water's coming from. We have a, a water well on the property, and we're willing to drill a couple more. And also, one of our options would be Pioneer Valley. They've got a water line that goes out to chloride, and I've, I've talked to them. They've got, uh, much more water allocated to them than they need, and the guy I talked to said he'd be happy to, uh, to, uh, set us up with, uh, water from them if we get approved.
Well, it says here on my, what I've got, it says it is served by an onsite water and septic system.
Yeah. There's a house out there that has a water well, and it does have a septic system, and we would use the, the one water well until we needed more, and then we would add one or two more water wells.
What, uh, how much water does that well produce?
I don't know. Uh, it, it's got a pump that's stuck into it, and we've got to pull the pump out and test the, test the water, but, uh, not knowing the condition of the well, I don't even want to take a gas.
Having known the condition of wells out there and so forth, the amount and how they've been tested as far as, uh, it, I think the Pioneer Water Company would be a good way to go, but an onsite water well, I don't see you got that.
Yeah. The Pioneer Valley water, uh, uh, well field, you know, provides water to chloride, so we would be getting Pioneer Valley water through, uh, the, the town of Chloride, and that's what we would prefer. And I think it's available and doable.
Any additional questions of the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, question. Maybe it's in the recommendations, but can we condition the approval upon proving, uh, a water service agreement from them or proving the water?
County a copy of their, their agreement? We could do something like that.
Okay. I guess I'll make a motion. Let's, I'll make a motion to approve based on staff recommendation with the additional condition that the applicant provide, uh, proof of water service from either the water service provider or proof of adequacy from a well system.
Second.
We have a second. Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Gordon, a second by Commissioner Selberg. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, call to the public. That time's expired. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, or unless there's some announcements or things that we need to take care of. I don't think so, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Selberg, second by Mr. Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you all.